Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11, 2012, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Reports from standing committees, the Finance Committee, we had a meeting prior to the council meeting, two and a half hour meeting, it was wonderful. Our next meeting will be July 9th, hopefully it won't be as long. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing to report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President, no meeting scheduled and nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President, no meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President, no meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. And Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report at this time.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several items for the Finance Committee, 12-122, budget amendments, 12-123, renewal of intensive supervision probation grant, 12-124, police cruiser purchase, 12-125, purchase agreement Bennett Lumber Property, 12-126, agreement Jet Fuel Depot with Flight Services, 12-127, charter amendment, appointed finance director, 12-128 EMS agreement, 12-129, agreement Muni Airport Jet Fuel Tank and Dispensing System, 12-130, bids airport Jet Fuel Tank pad and containment area, 12-131, bids airport, the Jet Fuel Tank and Dispensing System, 12-132, license agreement with Ohio Edison Champion Creek Trail, 12-133, perpetual trail easement Champion Creek Trail, 12-134, agreement with ODOT State Route 3 in East Reagan intersection, 12-135, amending section 145 of the codified ordinances, public art in historic district, and 12-136, moving Ohio forward state demolition funding. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fireworks this year will be on July 3rd, we generally use July 3rd here in the city rather than the 4th, we get a better price that way. Montville Township, Medina Township, and Lafayette Township have all contributed to the fireworks. We've, at the mayor's office, we've had a number of calls wanting to know precisely when the fireworks will start, and that's at dark. Because we can't, you know, with the weather conditions and environment and whatnot, we can't really predict that. So, as soon as it's dark enough to adequately see them, they'll shoot them off. And that's at the high school rec center area. July 4th, the parade comes from the high school to up Liberty Street and around the square. It lines up starting at 5 o'clock and steps off at 6:00 PM, and then there's also a band concert on the square that same evening, July 4th. This year, new at the July 4th parade is the shopping cart brigade which Medina, United Church of Christ and Feeding Medina County are putting together, and it's a new tradition this year and one that we and they hope will continue. And what it is, is asking community members attending the parade for observation, to watch the parade, to bring a non-perishable food item with them. The carts will be decorated, as will be the people pushing the carts, and then the food collected will assist the local food pantries in the area. And it's an excellent way to help support those that are in need of proper nutrition and food here in our own community. The Medina Community Band Concerts are each Friday night, they've had several already, weather's been good for them other than the first one in June. June and July, Friday nights at 8:30 PM and Wednesday, July 4th at 8:30. It's a great community event for families, they're free concerts. We have had some complaints of motorcycles and the noise of motorcycles up around the band concert at the time of the band. And when I say not just motorcycles driving by, but motorcycles either stopped at the light or parked on the side of the road and revving and gunning the engines, which is distracting to the folks at the concert. So just forewarning, we've assigned officers up there during that time period to keep an eye on that and take corrective action if necessary, if those things take place. And then last but not least, Oremaco, supplemented by merchants and businesses in Medina, are having the Jazz Under the Stars events, which are free concerts up on the square. There's three more scheduled, all Saturdays, July 7th, August 12th, and September 1st. They're Saturday night concerts from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And Oremaco is also hosting a summer art program for youth over at the Union Square Community Room. The program ran the last three Saturdays, and this coming Saturday, June 30th, is going to be their graduation and a chance for the youth to show their art displays and what they've accomplished. I'll be taking part in that, and if any of the council would like to come to that, it's at the community room there from 9:30 to 10:30 Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a couple items on tonight's agenda we'll talk about when we get there. The tax budget went to Finance Committee today, we'll be at our next meeting, that's a part of the budget process from state code. And then we continue to move forward on the bond refinancing that we plan for later this year. At Finance Committee today, we approved the bond counsel and the bond underwriter, and this will enable us to take advantage of our credit rating, which is better than it was in 2002 when we did the issue as well as the favorable market and the shorter term on the issue, to refinance those and save some money on that. Finally, I would like to introduce, it's on your agenda to approve my appointment, this is Rich Petruniak, he's my appointment to deputy finance director, and you'll be approving him, we look forward to working with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pretty sure that Steve Vogel will have some erudite words of admonition on behalf of building department, and so I'd like to donate my time to him.
Thank you for yielding your time.
Chief Baraducci, please chief.
I have no report, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Kimberly Rice, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mike Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have a report this evening. The MCRZ and the Medina Hospital are happy to announce we're having a fireworks festival this year, Tuesday, July 3rd, starting at 5 o'clock. There will be food vendors, game trailers, inflatables, and a concert series with the Stage One running till 11:00 PM. We are also offering a 15% discount membership sale for the entire day and $3 daily pass entry fees starting at 5 o'clock. Also, every membership purchase gets an entry to win a new iPad. The pool hours will also be extended to 9 o'clock when the building closes, so get there early to ensure a good parking spot and enjoy the city fireworks with the rec center this year. Also, a reminder in an effort to help ensure the safety and security of the patrons of the MCRZ, all non-members of the rec will need to follow our ID policy. This policy requires that all patrons using the facility that are non-members will need to show an ID in order to enter the facility. This policy allows us to check all patrons 18 and over to a National Sexual Offender Registry, and for security purposes gives us a log of all patrons entering the building. Our next scheduled advisory board meeting is Thursday, July 19th at 7:30 AM at the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. First like to say I've shortened my report this evening so that Mr. Huber can get here, out of here on time tonight. I'd like to remind our citizens who rent their homes that they have a legal right to a safe and sanitary environment. The city of Medina has adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, which provides minimum standards for buildings both inside and out. This code allows us to legally address concerns regarding the upkeep of the property. Please contact the building department and make arrangements for us to meet on site if you have concerns that the property you lease is not being kept in a safe and sanitary condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Champion Creek Trail, otherwise known as the Roscoe Yewin Extension, it begins at Guilford Road and will end on South Broadway, is under construction and will be open soon. A community spotlight video is airing on Channel 37, Channel 37 several times throughout the day pertaining to the vegetation management work along the transmission and distribution line right away in the city by First Energy, and will be a resource for residents should they have any questions. And lastly, the city has received positive comments about the 56 flower urns that are situated in the downtown district. I would like to thank Boyards Greenhouse, who grew them from small plants in their greenhouse, and were ready for Memorial Day. This summer, the weather has been excellent to be outdoors, and residents and visitors alike are enjoying them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Commerce Drive extension should be open later this week, we're just doing last minute landscaping and restoration, anticipate opening that to the public shortly. Beachwood Drive reconstruction, we did award it prior to the last council meeting, that construction work is expected to start within the next two weeks. We will be notifying all the residents in the area by letter, giving them information about the project. Later this week, we will be advertising to accept bids for the Raymaller Park splash pad. That project will be done this summer, hopefully completed early in September to allow some usage. And lastly, our East Smith's Milk Rise Water Line, the water line is complete, it is online. We do have a couple more weeks of restoration and landscaping out there, but the water line is being used now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Conwell, Service Director, Representative.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. We have the confirmation of appointment from the Finance Director, it's the Deputy Director of Finance, Rich Petruniak.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to confirm the appointment.
Second on confirmation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
The confirmation is confirmed, seven two zero.
Mr. Petruniak, welcome. I'm sure we'll be hopefully talking with you on many different issues, but welcome aboard. Notices, communications, and petitions, there are non-unfinished business, non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so that it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council? Ms. Walker?
Mr. President, council, I am Pat Walker, and I live at 523 East Friendship Street in Medina. Economic development that creates jobs benefits our community. I appreciate that council has been looking at a number of economic development issues. I also appreciate that council has looked at these issues and has improved many of those concerns. For instance, now, the Community Improvement Corporation, the CIC, now will be controlled by council and is more transparent than in the original proposal. I appreciate council's willingness to use money wisely and not to engage in just corporate welfare. It is important for the CIC not to be a bailout for developers or crony capitalism, but jobs for the community. Medina has a number of responsible developers who pay their taxes and are good corporate citizens. I particularly thank council for their commitment to pay fair wages when the projects involve construction, and I encourage that fair wages be paid for others on the projects, no matter what their job titles. In conclusion, I'd like to thank Kathy Patton for her efficient service, and I'd also like to thank everyone who has come out on the CIC issue.
Thank you, and we appreciate all your input, it was very valuable, and we did learn a lot and make several modifications to the documents based upon your input, and we appreciate that, we appreciate the input from the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to address council? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 113-12, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio by adoption of a new chapter 1380 relative to establishing a foreclosure registration program for vacant buildings and structures.
Move to approve.
Second.
I think, is Mr. Vogel going to hand this, or Mr.? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance establishes a requirement that banks and other entities that have foreclosed on a property register with the city and provide contact information regarding the identity of an individual who will be responsible for the maintenance of the property.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Mayor?
Council has given a updated version of it that included in the penalty section. Originally, it was just a penalty if the person, if the registration was not completed, but there were some other provisions in there that, obviously because they were included, we felt should be enforced as well. So the penalty section was changed with the assistance of the law director to include sections 1380.03A, 1380.04A, and/or 1380.05AB or C, rather than simply not registering. So that was the changes that you were emailed today.
Thank you. As our understanding that several of our communities have similar ordinances in place just to help to protect their community and their streets of which foreclosed properties have occurred, to make sure that the property maintenance on those properties are kept up to date, and if it's not, there's at least somebody to contact. Does anybody else have any additional questions or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 113-12 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 114-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 42-10 passed March 8th, 2010, relative to the subsidy agreement between the Ohio Rail Development Commission, the Wheeling Lake Erie Railroad Company, and the city of Medina relative to grade crossing improvements in the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested, I move to add it at this time.
Second, including the emergency clause.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This request, this ordinance will, as shown, modify existing ordinance that was passed for this project. The project was a combination of efforts from five different entities, including the railroad, the city, the PUCO, Ohio Rail Development Commission, and the Wheeling Lake Erie. The complete project was about a $1.7 million improvement. The city's portion of that is a little over $425,000. We are requesting that the ordinance be revised, an additional $68,100 is necessary. Of that amount, through a subsequent agreement with the PUCO, the city will get a little over $66,000 of that money returned.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 114-12 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 115-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Flight Services of Medina, a division of Olson Products, for the lease of a portion of the land at the Medina Municipal Airport located at 2050 Medina Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause has been requested, I move to add it at this time.
Second, including the emergency clause.
Mr. Huber.
This ordinance attaches the lease agreement between the city of Medina and Flight Services for the parcel of land where the building is located that the pilots use who man the University of Hospital helicopter that's currently located at the airport. There's a contract between University Hospital and Flight Services for use of that land, and we are leasing that land to Flight Services. They pay us $500 a month for that plot of land.
An emergency clause is because they're currently going to be operating there?
That's correct.
Any further discussion on the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 115-12 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 116-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a revocable use permit with St. Francis Church for the narrow strip of Ryder Way, which extends south from East Washington Street abutting the church property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Patton?
Thank you. St. Francis is in process of constructing a new parking lot on their property in order to service that parking lot with the sidewalk and electrical lines for the lights. They do have to cross a narrow strip of Ryder Way, it's a city Ryder Way, which extends south from the State Route 18 Ryder Way. This would give them the authorization, the permit to be able to do that.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 116-12 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 117-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept and execute the Articles of Incorporation pertaining to the establishment of a Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, for the city of Medina, authorizing Reston Landris, LPA, to file all necessary documentations with the state of Ohio relative to this project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussion about the formation of the Community Improvement Corporation, that's what this paperwork does. I do want to thank all of the members from the business community that are here this evening, Deberlin Schmitz and Valerie Rapp, both with the Medina Chamber, and also Maria Kipstall from Economic Development Corporation, Brad Root from AI Root, Bruce Gold from Architectural Daylighting, and Charles Marshall with Beacon Marshals Group Development Company. Obviously, we are not the first to form a Community Improvement Corporation, as there are over 200 of them in the state, 22 of them in five county region, and we won't be the last to form one, as there are other communities that I recently spoke to that are additionally forming, in discussions of forming CICs. Again, economic development tool, it is not about corporate welfare, but it is about, as we discussed, controlling properties to control our destiny, especially with the downtown. If we want to control what developers come in and what projects, then we need to control those properties, so it's just a snapshot of what it's about.
Thank you, and two clarifications, this is the Articles of Incorporation will form the entity, this entity is also going to be designated as a 501(c)(3) corporation by the Internal Revenue Code, which gives it special status of donations being made to the organization will receive tax deductions off the taxes. So that's the second piece of the puzzle. The first piece, of course, is filing the Articles of Incorporation. I'd also like to reiterate that I will be abstaining from this ordinance and the next, since the law firm I work with is Reston Landris, though I did not work on these particular documents, I am employed by that law firm, and I must abstain from voting on these two items. Is there any further discussion or comment? Mr. Lamb, you look like you want to say something.
No, I think Ms. Rice really covered most of it, but I just want to add to that, that I appreciate the input that we got from the broader community, not only the business community, but from the broader community too, because I think that input really helped us to come up with a better document, and a document that hopefully will be, you know, is more satisfying to the whole community. And further, that the ability now of the CIC to really have an impact on how development, what kind of development we have in certain areas of town can't be deemed anything short of probably, for me anyway, a dream come true, that we can have that kind of input so that we have outcomes that are what we really want and not outcomes that we would be dissatisfied with. So I appreciate Ms. Rice's work on it as well. I think this is an important thing for the city, I think it's nonpartisan, I think it is a long-term investment in the future of the city, and I am thrilled that we are doing it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Abstained.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Ordinance 117-12 passes 68s, one abstention.
Ordinance 118-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept and execute the Code of Regulations pertaining to the establishment of a Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, for the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Rice, you want to add anything about the bylaws?
No, basically, the governing documents for the CIC, again, I think we've had a lot of discussion about that, and while the council will be controlling it, I think eventually I would like to see some private businesses put on there for their perspective, as we do want to wean ourselves off of the community or the public dollars, and we would like to attract more private investment, and the way to do that is to have private people involved. So, again, you know, these are just the bylaws for the organization.
Thank you. Any further comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Abstained.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 118-12 passes 68s, one abstention.
Ordinance 119-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 117-11 passed December 12, 2011, amendments to the 2012 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first two items are, the court received a refund, and people at home may not be aware that when you have a refund, you still have to have approval to spend that money from council, you can't just spend it automatically. Third item is $18,000 for the Firehouse Engine Museum, which is something we discussed Third item is $18,000 for the Firehouse Engine Museum, which is something we discussed at the finance meeting a couple of weeks ago. The fourth item is the appropriation to authorize the purchase, which is related to the next ordinance we're going to discuss. And finally, is an ordinance to authorize in advance to repay in advance that we did last year for a project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Ordinance 120-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Jaeger Family LLC and Ohio Limited Liability Company and Lehman Family LLC and Ohio Limited Liability Company for the purchase of property located at East Smith Road and Medina City Lot 9109.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city of Medina is agreeing to purchase the remainder of the Bennett Lumber property from the Lehman and Jaeger family. The property is appraised at $165,000. The families are donating $70,000 of value to the city with respect to this purchase. We are agreeing to buy the roughly five-acre plot for $95,000.
Thank you, and thanks for all your hard work on this. We know we've been discussing this for several months, and negotiations have been long. Anybody else have any comments?